So you're asking if we need generators?
No. Are there gonna be generators sent to Jamaica currently? Do you know if there's plans to send out any?
Well, it's on the needs. Generators two kilowatt up to seven point five kilowatt. It's actually on the needs. And are are being made through other sources for generators to to get to. Uh uh Jamaica, I'm not quite sure where that is at just yet.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, YouTube, I believe, we're on now. Good.
Okay, thank you.
And just to say, as you re- as and as you raise that, just to say, at the in the peak of the hurricane, uh we lost seventy seven percent of electricity islandwide.
Mm hmm.
And the latest, I I understand that we are up past fifty percent restoration of electricity, and this was up to Friday. Don't know what the current percentage is now, but just to let people know that um the process of restoring like electricity is ongoing.
Yes, in in Trelawney, where I'm from, there is no electricity up to last night and no water. So.
Okay, that is weird. Yeah, sorry.
Trelawney, Trelawney.
Trelawney.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So same in the Irish town in Saint Andrew.
I'm sorry?
It's the same in Irish Town up in Saint Andrew. There's no electricity, no water, no telephone.
Same in Jets Hill in Kingston.
Okay.
May I just ask one question? There's a lot of people from our diaspora in Liverpool, Manchester, the northwest area. I appreciate there's some collection centers there already, but are there any plans to have an additional collection center in the northwest of the country?
Well, we have no immediate plans to increase the collection centers. But I don't mind telling you, if we can get other shipping companies, I'm sorry, um, what's the word they want, huh?
Other locations.
Other locations, sure, we'll add them to our list. We will certainly do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, I'm Sharon.
Yes, good evening.
Good afternoon, um, good evening, hi, I'm Sharon Charles, so um just back to the shipping and um at the dock location, so you said that you can, it's been extended to, well, it's for one month, which is twenty eighth of November. You said there's a possibility of it being extended. Is there a reason why it can't be extended?
I'm sorry, there's a reason why the extension of the waiver duties can't be extended?
Yeah, absolutely. Ye- the reason for my.
I suspect it, well, I can't speak for customs only. Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, the reason for my questions is I have about nine barrels to send that I need to, that I've have, I've got an organization who's gonna be shipping that to Jamaica. Obviously, there's gonna be the import fees, the shipping fees, and these are with essential items to get to Saint Elizabeth, Trinale, Saint Anne's, and um Saint Catherine's for people who are in need. Um, it would, my deadline is quite tight because the barrels haven't arrived yet, they are arriving on Sunday, and I also have supermarkets that are gonna be donating towards me, I'm not a charity, I'm an individual person. I've got a lot of support with this mission I'm doing. I am um, you know, second generation Jamaican background, we have a family house in Trinale. So um I want to do as much as possible. I'm aware of the circumstances with the flooding, there's no electricity, suplo- s- food supplies, people can't get to the shop, et cetera, so um it would be really good if it could be considered of extend it um extending everything so that people can actually get stuff to Jamaica, especially if they're central items, such as.
Yes.
Drink, water, et cetera.
Well, um, so to to your quest question, to your narrow question, um I really can't answer it as to um if there's a reason why it couldn't be extended. Um I know that it can be extended because the request has been made and they are considering it. So I don't know what um went into the original decision for one month. I'm sure customs and central government and the government has good reason for it. I can't really speak to it. But just to say that the the request to extend it time has fallen on fertile ground and we're actively pursuing it.
Excellent, that's great, thank you.
I see Shirley has raised her hand, Shirley Palmer?
Yes, thank you for taking my question and good evening to everybody. Um I'm gonna ask for patience because I'm losing my voice, but I have one comment and one question. Um, the comment, it relates to the phenomenal love the second and third generation Jamaicans have for the island, uh those like myself, um and the desire we have to privately contribute to aid by sending out our own parcels and barrels. Uh, the word of caution that I would give is that I lived in Jamaica through Hurricane Gilbert and for the for a ten year period after. Um, for the first year that I was in Jamaica, I experienced barrels still being cleared through customs that had been sent in the weeks after Gilbert, and this was purely because for a period of time customs clearance and deliveries were um prioritizing emergency aid coming into Jamaica. So what I would say is, as much as we want to be independent in sending uh the goods that we know people need, our best um means of commu- of contributing at this time truly is through the government portal that has been set up. Um, my question relates to distribution. I'm very concerned that we are now coming into winter, uh that we're coming into the period of Jamaica in which customs are traditionally overwhelmed by barrels going in for Christmas. And I was wondering whether there were any plans or foot within Jamaican government apart uh departments to treat Jamaica as if it were a war zone. And in relation to this, therefore, call upon the global community to prioritize the sending uh or the lease of drones to Jamaica for the purpose of facilitating rapid drops of aid to communities that are currently unreachable by road. Do you think that's something that could be considered or applied for?
Oh, thank you so much for your question. Um, I'd like to respond firstly to your ex- your your experience um with Gilbert. And I'd like to say to you, the importation and the customs regime that exists now is, oh, it's it's completely different than what exists at the time of Gilbert, the customs clearance procedures in accordance with international standards has been um has been um improved substantially. As a matter of fact, if you think about a closer hurricane hurricane barrel, um I don't know how many persons on this platform have sent barrels during uh down to Jamaica after Hurricane Barrel and see when uh recipients receive those goods. Uh, we are not talking about months delays or a year delay of barrels and so on, as may have happened um at Gilbert time, things are substantially different now. So I don't expect those persons who won't go through the book, do not do not wish to use the the um the the setup procedures that we have just set up and do it privately. I still don't expect that there's going to be months of delay in barrels getting um to their loved ones. The other thing is, um Jamaica has been designated by the Jamaican government, the entire island, as a disaster risk area, which allows for um em- emergency ingress and egress for our international partners. So I do not know that going the extra step of declaring Jamaica a war zone is going to necessarily um allow for our increased access for um needs or goods and services coming to the island. Um, and of course, there's the other aspect of it, it would be designating um something which is not the case, Jamaica is not a war zone. And that, of course, would have implications for tourism and the economy that quite frankly, we do not want to um have to deal with going forward after we get over um relief situation. And I should say, um I'm just being reminded that our J D F helicopters are providing airlift right for AdPem on the ground.
Uh, just to re- just to clarify, I would never, I would never want to see Jamaica um designated a war zone. It's just what I'm seeing visually, um the flattening of Jamaica um shows me that people are going through no less difficulty than those in, say, Gaza or Ukraine. They're going through exactly the same pain. And therefore, for me, the um, the the response of the international community should be towards Jamaica exactly as if it were a country that had experienced an attack of war.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but 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 again, what I'm saying is quite frankly, relief aid and aid is problematic in areas designated um as a war zone, you know? People feel if an area is designated a war zone, there are not proper channels for relief to come in and so on, and you know, that there's conflict, that it's timing um relief going into the particular area. So what I'm saying is, we we don't need to do that, Jamaica doesn't need, we're not at war, it's not a war.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, disaster. And we have taken the necessary legislative and international steps to see to it that we get the relief as quickly as possible, without having to go the route of a war zone.
What can we do, Commissioner? Um, you've already laid out um steps that we can take to help as individuals and collectively. But what what would what would mean the most to Jamaicans at this time?
I think, I think quite frankly, AdPem has done it best to say what would what what is needed the most. We start with the essentials of life, food, shelter, um recovery, equipment, and so on. I think by and large, if I'm not mistaken, we've stayed away from clothing on the needs list.
First of all.
All right, we're stayed away from that, I believe, AdPem stayed away from that. They, see, I I don't I don't mind telling you that the Office of Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Management in Jamaica uh is very good at what it does, to be frank with you. They have, they they they, you know, I'm not surprised that they're able to come up with a preliminary needs list in such a quick fashion, cause they have, we're bidding through it, particularly the rec- the hurricane barrel. So we know what the immediate needs are, what is most important to people. First thing is, we have to secure lives. Securing lives means security on the ground, providing food and shelter. And those are the, what the Jamaican government is focused on.
Thank you so much for giving me your time, you've helped to focus my mind on on what needs to be done, thank you.
Uh Vern? Vern?
Hello? Hello, can you?
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, so my name is Talisa, I'm with, I'm here with Vern, my mother. Um, and the question I have um is relating to, uh so just for some um background, our family is in Black River, specifically in Newtown, which sits just above Black River. And from our understanding, um the main roads that lead into Black River are um from what's been described, us destroyed, as I'm sure many parts of Jamaica, it's a similar situation. Um, and we understand that aid is being flown in, like we've seen kind of snippets of information that aid is getting in in different places, um and, you know, people are sending things to help, et cetera. Um, what I think the main thing we want to understand firstly is to get clarity around two things, two things that you just mentioned, which are um, which are food and shelter, because I guess the biggest fear that we have sitting here and being unable to physically be there and to um get in ourselves and um is to understand firstly how the aid, the food, is distributed, and firstly, that it is literally, there is a first round of food getting to every everyone across Jamaica who needs it, and the reason why I ask is because some places are more easily accessible than others, so how do we know? Because we 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 obviously cannot contact our family, that everything is cut off there. So how do, how can we, we're just sitting here waiting, you know, and just imagining every day that they're starving, we don't know. Um, how do we know that food has reached everybody a first round? And that secondly, um shelter, when it comes to that, from what I understand in Newtown, eighty percent of the buildings are gone, which means people don't really have, I don't know what the situation looks like specifically, but to me, that means they don't really have shelter, because everything is, you know, there's no roof, there's no shelter, li- literally. So therefore, what is the plan from the Jamaican government in order to have people be safe and secure in some kind of temp- I I I just want to understand what the the next week, two week, month, the plan is, in terms of what it looks like for both food and shelter?
So, um I'm aware that AdPem has workers in just about every community, and particularly in Black River and Saint Elizabeth, see to the distribut- of um, of um of items. J D F has a field hospital in um in Saint Elizabeth as well, and then there's also temporary housing. Um, I believe, a a shelter package, shelter kit, yes, that's what it's called, donated, has been, shelter kits have been donated by the UK government, which was, I think was part of the first aircraft that landed in Jamaica, which is being distributed widely. What I would say to you, if you go again to supportjamaica.gov.jm, you will see um updates as to what is actually happening, you're gonna, and of course YouTube, YouTube, you know, and your your programs and so on. So, I I don't mind, I don't mind telling you, particularly in Black River, things are are very, very dire, that's the truth of it, very dire there. So.
And I think the.
Slow. Yeah, it has been slow going, but um, you know, the 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 efforts are being made by the Jamaican government.
Thank you so much for saying that, um I think because the the concern I had is that I've seen many images of downtown in Black River. Um, but just above downtown is Newtown, and I've seen nothing about it, like I, like from what I understand, people really couldn't get in, and I'm assuming people have now, but we just don't know. And that's why I say even black downtown Black River, but there is above there and the community is around there. So um I will definitely go to the website that you've said, um but I guess it how, because I guess my next question is then, if for the shelter, how are people transported to the shelter? How is that managed? Is that something that's happening, are people being taken there? Secondly, with this, again with food, is it something where it's being distributed? Cause there's a lot of vulnerable people that live alone, there's elderly people that live alone. If they can't go out into the street to go and get the food, wh- what happens to them, I'm just.
Yes, the answer is yes to both questions, and it is being managed by the AdPem workers on the ground in tandem with the security forces, I have to know that the police and the soldiers are there helping to transport people where necessary to shelters and to help with the distribution of food that is actually taking place.
That's very reassuring, thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Uh, I think Babsy's next.
Um, Babsy.
Babsy?
Oh, good evening, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, everybody, good evening, sir. I've been listening intensively to the questions and the responses and I am sort of devas- devastated with the whole thing, like many of us. But my question to you as a representative of Jamaica, um and I'm in the UK for, just to say, well, I'm sure you know that, um many of us in the UK here wish to do something and to do it quickly. It's not just about the customs, yeah? Um, I just come back from Jamaica and then this disaster happens. I've been informed of the house being completely wrecked. My niece hasn't got no roof. There's nobody that has come to check in Saint James where they are to see if they're okay. Nobody, there's no light, there's no electricity, and there's no water. There is nobody on the ground. And that is the worry.
How are you doing?
How are you?
I'm okay.
Good, I'm good.
You know? And we are here as a community wanting to do something. But it's not just that. We 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 want to do it, we want to be helped to make it possible. And we know nothing can happen without money. And the concern that I have is that we have this situation in Jamaica whereby the biggest question for us overseas is how can we help our family? And what support is Jamaica gonna offer us here in the UK? Yeah, to enable us to support our family, which will in turn help the Jamaican government. Now, I hear you say about the custom duties and um but I'm not hearing, what is it that they are actually doing? I've been on the website, I've I've I think I've read everything that people have said to me, it's unclear. Can we send things that is gonna be duty free, completely, custom duty free? So that we are able to help the country? What is it that Jamaica is actually offering? You know, you can hear the devastation from everybody that has spoken on this platform this evening. And we want to be r- reassured and rest assured that our helping hand is going to actually help Jamaica holistically. Now, for me, I I'm in my little community here in the UK, and everybody's jumping back, what can we do? We know several people that have lost roof. Roofing is gonna be a very expensive game. What is the government gonna do about specifically those things? There are a lot of people who need to be in shelter accommodation.
So, well, um, let me, let me say first of all, that when 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 I say that efforts are being made to um to to provide relief, et cetera, particularly in those six parishes that have been affected. And first among them, of course, is Saint Elizabeth, and then there's Black River and Westmoreland, those are the the hardest hit parishes. Um, we we know frankly, and you can take my word for it, it's social media. I spent the last um two to three days looking at different persons who have been able to um drive into Saint Elizabeth and Black River, speaking with the police and the soldiers, um uh BBC reporters, uh reporters from American media, what they're on the ground showing you what is happening now, obviously, obviously, not everybody has been reached in these affected areas. There are pockets of people who have not yet received any relief whatsoever. And that is to be expected, quite frankly, especially you're talking about the worst hurricane that has ever affected Jamaica. All right, I'm not here telling anybody on this platform that all the relief has been done and everybody has been touched and we have been managed to make anybody whole, nobody has been made whole yet from this, from this hurricane. But if you simply just follow um the website, I refer to the website, but just media generally, you will see that, yes, there is relief taking place here, and then there are people who who have, as yet have not yet been touched. You've asked me about what specifically has the Jamaican in terms of the customs duties and the items. There is a list of items which you can again assess on the website. And we really want to go through and read all of all of it. Tissues, wares, cleaning products, diapers, clothing, mattress, bed linens, toiletries, and so on, and so on, and so on, for which there is a waiver of customs duty. And as I've said before, um yes, it is for a month. We are making every effort to extend that period. As to what we and my fellow Jamaicans and whoever else can do here in the United Kingdom for what is happening in Jamaica, again, I I refer to the website, supportjamaica.gov.jm, because it not only covers the needs list and money, it also covers volunteers. What the skill sets are that we need, um so, you know, it's all there. What the skills we need at this point in. All right, uh iPhone nineteen. Batteries as well, I'm starting this, stick it, it's all, uh folks, this is the list, the long list of the items exempt from duties. The needs list, and I printed it out here. It goes ten, ten or so pages?
Yes, sir.
Ten or so pages.
Shell, tonne accommodation.
Shell tonne accommodation, water sanitation, debris cleaning equipment, health supplies, items dealing with environmental health, agriculture, livestock, and military needs. All there on the comprehensive website. Yes, iPhone nineteen.
Hi, good evening, Your Excellency, good evening to everybody on the table. Um, my name is Claudia Mackenzie, um I am British born Jamaican um parentage, and I'm representing two businesses here tonight. I'm also representing my husband Barry, who is um Jamaican from Clarendon. Um, I'd like to, I mean, first of all, just to, I don't want to keep going on over it, over what has been spoken about before, but I think for the sake of whatever it costs to upgrade Zoom, we need to have Your Excellency, another follow up meeting so that more people can join. Um, I know that there's uh a a small cost, as far as I'm concerned, it's a small cost, I believe it's about a hundred and eighty pounds to upgrade Zoom, and I'm sure there are individuals here and there are businesses who would, you know, freely kind of donate to be able to um pay for that that service so that you can update the capacity of the Zoom, okay? Um, the businesses that I represent here in the UK, um I represent a restaurant. Um, I won't say the name because I don't want to advertise, but I represent a London um Caribbean restaurant, and in Jamaica, I represent a nursing home of great repute in Manchester. Um, and just, I would like to to take, I'd like your note taker to take a note of my name, Claudia Mackenzie, because I am very networked with the Caribbean, the Black Caribbean um restaurant community in London. And we would like to do something as a collective of restaurant owners, general managers, um so that you, um the the Jamaican government, the the fundraising um mechanic can come through our restaurants in an official capacity to donate. I think it's, for instance, we're at Christmas now, and there are several schemes here in the UK for, for instance, homelessness, which is a big um uh, you know, um a big platform where people can donate through going to a restaurant, going to a pub, and they can leave, they can donate money through a restaurant's EPOS system, so the handheld device, they can, they can donate money, five pounds, ten pounds, fifty pounds, whatever it is. I believe that we can do the same thing if we do it in an official capacity with a high commission. And, um, that is linked to the official fundraising for Jamaica. It, to me, it seems like a missed opportunity to say that you cannot, um, you know, uh, you, you can't kind of, um, uh, participate in individual fundraising initiatives. When actually there are other charities, there are charities for homelessness and for all sorts of things that can use, um, sectors. I'm in the hospitality sector, they can use us to be able to do that in a widespread way and, but in a coordinated way and it would need to be official with your stamp of approval. Um, because we would need the credibility to do so. As a restaurant owner myself, I'm not willing to bear that burden of going out there and fundraising without having the credibility of, um, the High Commission. Um, so that people feel safe and secure to be able to donate. A hundred percent of the proceeds would go to the official, um, donation platform. But I wouldn't be willing to put myself at that risk without having the High Commission put that stamp of approval on a campaign. So I would like your note taker to take my details so that we can have a discussion about how we as a restaurant and many other restaurants across the UK could join together and do that kind of fundraising initiatives.
So let, let me say first, thank you, Claudia.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Mackenzie, first of all, uh, maybe I should have been a little clearer on this. I'm certainly not saying, and I'm not discouraging. All right, I'm not discouraging that at all as a matter of fact. I welcome that, I welcome all the fundraising that is taking place, um, in aid of, um, in aid of Jamaica. The issue is that, quite frankly, we, we do not have the bandwidth now to investigate all the different organizations, et cetera, et cetera, that have approached us to say we can endorse that particular organization in respect of their fundraising. We just don't have the bandwidth for it. Quite frankly, our efforts.
Can I make a suggestion?
Elsewhere this critical time. I should, I should, I should tell you, um, it's, I think it's out there on social media already. There are, there are tens of websites, fraudulent websites out there seeking funds from people and so on, and we have had to be spending the time telling people, no, that's a fraudulent website. That's no connection with us, et cetera. Just simply donate to the account on the supportjamaica.gov.jm website.
I, and I.
So that's, that's the reason for it.
I completely accept that.
There are, there are some legacy. Hello? Yes, so on the, on the website, you will see that AdPem has actually identified a number of charities that they, they say they are working with, local Jamaican charities. So those are endorsed, those particular charities they said that are, are endorsed. So as you are, one, we don't have the bandwidth to investigate. I mean, I can tell you, even today, I've, I've had requests from seven or eight different groups who have asked me for a letter of endorsement for their fundraising effort, et cetera, et cetera. We just cannot handle the volume of requests. And I really must be guided by what our own minister in, in Jamaica said. That to avoid do that as best as possible, we do encourage a fundraising, we do see it. Um, and I'll say this too, any organization, any individual that donates to Jamaica through the website, supportjamaica.gov.jm will be recognized. The amount of their contribution and the name of the entity will be recognized. But as the, um, the endorsing a number of different fundraising events. Um, I regret to say that we're not generally in that position right now. Charisse?
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, just have a few questions, I've been following suit since we started. I know you said that you can't endorse other charity organization. I'm calling, I'm burning them anyway, I am a Jamaican born. And I may not be affected directly because I'm from the Kingston side. However, they are still my people. And you said we can donate through the organization that you mentioned, the website. However, will there be any transparency through that organization so we can see where the funding will go in? And who is being supported? Because yes, it's okay. It's okay to say that we are helping those that we can reach and we're giving them aid and shelter. However, to the magnitude of the devastation that's happening in Black River and Saint Elizabeth and Westmoreland and so forth. Wouldn't we think it would be better if we evacuate the living? Because there's a lot of dead animals and people still in that community that's been there for almost a week now. And you got the living still there, there's no house there, there's nowhere for them to stay. So we're feeding the living amongst all those disease that's developing in those communities. What are we putting in place to take the living out of those facilities? And put them in a proper shelter away from what's going on? And then we can attend to all the animals that's passed away and family members of the community rather than still feeding the living within those communities?
Um, first of all, and I thank you for the question, yes, the Jamaican government is has committed itself to transparency with the use of the funds that they receive through the website. Um, and I believe you, I think that was done with Hurricane Beryl and there was a, um, a full report on that. And I suspect that is how they will, will do that on this occasion as well. As to how the monies are utilized. So there will be acknowledgement to the persons who have donated with thanks, of course. And then there'll be a report as to how they are, the funds have been utilized. Evacuation is taking place for the living, that's what is taking place. Um, soldiers are working with AdPem workers on the ground and assisted by police in trying to get people, um, into, um, where possible, um, correct, um, shelters within the parish. And if not, to try and move them out to other, um, shelters outside of the parish that they are affected in. So that is a process that is ongoing as well.
Okay, but earlier you mentioned that there are certain communities which we understand the devastation that's going on that is unable to be reached, um, by roads. If we can't reach them by road, can we get to them by sea? Because we are Jamaican, we are very resortful people. We need to go back to basic and get some boats and go and save people. We can't wait for the roads to be fixed because let's be honest. If they got, don't got running water, they don't got electricity, there's no toilet facilities, there's no food. If we're gonna give them a week, they're not gonna survive. So what measures are we putting in place to get them ASAP?
The Coast Guard is actually actively involved as well. I should have mentioned that, to see to it that the evacuation, evacuations and relocations can take place by sea. Also know that the JDF has helicopters deployed, trying to evacuate people in that way as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alexandra is next, is that Alexandra? Yes, Alexandra is next.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, thank, um, Your Excellency, thank you very much for this. Um, I've been working with an NGO in Falmouth, uh, Trelawney for twenty years. Uh, we have teams of architects, engineers, um, GIS mapping and, uh, links with, uh, US teams as well, who can help support communities. I understand that people are sheltering in buildings which are incredibly unstable. Um, and unfortunately, we have no comms to reach them unless there's Starlink access. Uh, is there ways that we can help support, uh, you and these communities in Jamaica? And, um, is there also, my other question is, is Starlink being, is there a central Starlink access point in any of these communities? So people can find out if their loved ones are actually alive? Because we have a lot of people who just can't even reach their loved ones to determine whether they're actually alive and what their status is because of the communications being down.
So let me, let me answer the second question first.
Okay.
I did, oh, our minister did announce an arrangement with Starlink for communication to take place that way. Um, I'm not sure if all communities have been, have been covered by it. But I know their, um, communication by virtue of Starlink is taking place in some communities. As regards your first question. Um, I should tell you that, um, the FCDO here in the UK um, has been working with the Jamaican government to provide tho- those kinds of, um, um, logistics, um, and services. Like those to Jamaica, matter of fact, um, engineer is what have you to go to Jamaica and so on, to help to shore up what we have on the ground. So I know that is taking place. And I should also say our ambassador, Anthony Anderson, who is operating out of the Washington Embassy is spearheading that effort as well. Send us an email, please, please, send us an email. And I can put you in touch with who's coordinating all of that. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We also have access to, um, equipment and tools in the Falmouth area. So, um, so I will send you an email directly after this and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yes, uh, Cara? It's Kira.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Good afternoon, um, Your Excellency and everyone this evening, it's a pleasure to be here. Um, unfortunately, on these, um, grounds. My name is Kira Williams and I'm second generation, um, Jamaican. And also I represent, um, a network that I involve called the London Black Teachers Network. I'm also a teacher and there's two things that I just wanted to raise with you, sir. Um, um, previously before the hurricane, I have been doing fundraising at my school because I'm in a position where I want to teach the children to be globally aware as citizens. And they raised money and also they, they actually brought in resources for a school that is really poorly resourced. And one of the things that we wanted to do is get the children to communicate, to know what it's like to live in a country where, um, you know, they have to share resources and, and, um, in the small natural resources that they have. And I chose a school in St. Thomas, um, the Ellis Primary. So the children, um, brought in a lot of books and resources and raised funds. And then I was told by my school that they couldn't transfer the money, um, to the school directly. So they raised money and they raised, and they collected items. And, um, I personally arranged for the items to be shipped to Jamaica. But the funds that the children raised, um, the school refused to transfer it because it was against their policy. So I contacted the High Commission to help me and I didn't get a response at all. And this is before you were overwhelmed with so much, um, queries about the storm. So that concerned me because I still want to get, do lots of links with, um, Jamaica schools. Um, because I know that the children have, uh, little things that they, they need so that they can achieve in their education. So it's something that I'm still interested in doing and pursuing because I want them to be globally aware as what's happening in all over the world in, um, in, in deprived areas. Um, or the second thing that I wanted to talk about was, um, the fact that, um, you know, Jamaica suffered this category five hurricane. And the metrologists are now looking into features of category six hurricane or, and what it would look like. So what exactly is Jamaica doing to educate the people? How to prepare against climate change and storms in the future? And because prevention is better than cure. And I think if we're going to always be suffering like this and we don't know where exactly is the next, um, storm's going to hit. You know, in, especially if the sea level is always arising. You know, what exactly are we doing so that we are more prepared, um, Jamaicans, even though?
So firstly. So, uh, thank you for that, firstly, the, the first query you raised. I'm going to ask you to, oh, send another email, please. All right, cro@jcuk.com. And we will refer that issue to our National Education Trust. On the second question, our citizen is about climate change. To be frank with you, I don't know, the, the, the real thing is for government to lead on what, um, the defects of climate change, et cetera. Um, proper garbage collection, how we treat the environment and so on. Um, it's, it's a, it's a government issue, it's a government, it's an international issue. It's largely political, quite frankly. We are, we have a seat at the table, uh, conference of parties, you probably know about the Conference of Parties. Uh, which is to, to lead in this year, change of the Commonwealth, um, almost continuously. Even did so early on, um, at the palace. So, um, you know, I hear what you're saying, it's, 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 it's an ongoing process. Um, but it, it really, climate, we are affected by climate change because of what the major industrialized countries are doing about their greenhouse gas emissions. It's really not so much what Jamaica does or what our citizens do, it's what other countries do.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
Well, I'll send the email as you said to, um, to yourself again, that's no problem in sending. And for the attention of who?
Um, if you send it, cro@jcuk, it could be, well, the, you can say for the attention of Mrs. Vivian Seaver.
Okay.
Uh. Marie? Yes.
Hi, good evening, um, it's just a quick one from me. Um, I'm aware that quite a few, quite a few resorts haven't necessarily been as affected as much. So my question really is, are you able to share what international resorts and international companies and businesses that are occupying the island? What are they doing or what have they done? What are they doing or what have they done or what have they offered to substantially support Jamaicans? I.e., are they helping to house individuals? Have they contributed financially? Are they bringing in any kind of trucks or anything? Like what, what's their position since they occupy quite a bit of the, the island?
I don't have, I don't have information on what the, the resorts are doing as a, as a body. I really don't have information on that. And quite frankly, I can't, I, I, I think a few hotels and, yeah, the tourism ministry. We can check on that and supply an answer. I say this, but I saw in the, in a suggestion being made. I saw a suggestion being made this afternoon or this, or today about another town hall meeting. That is something we're going to consider and perhaps give an update on that as well as a number of other issues. Yin Yang Twins? Oh, sorry, Marsha, I beg your pardon. Marsha is first. Marsha B. 2.0.
Good evening, everyone. There was quite a few questions going on in the YouTube chat. I don't know if anyone is actually monitoring them, but I was going to read out one from a person I know called Nathaniel L. Pete. He has put two comments. He said, "Food for the poor, Jamaica gives full transparency." I think that was going to the lady that was talking about the food. And there was another comment that he also put in there. I'm just speaking on behalf of him because I do know him personally. He has put in the chat, I don't know if, if you're, if you've got anyone in your office that's actually seen the comments, but he says he has a fundraiser also coming up on the 14th of this month. There's quite a lot of comments and you also have just over 1,200 people in the YouTube chat. So I thought I'd let you guys know.
Hello, Marsha? Just to... Hello? Well, Marsha B. has, I'm not, um, didn't hear the, your full question, but we are monitoring the chat. And we are, will be supplying answers to the questions posed. Was there a fundraising question?
Fundraising coming up on the 14th. That was a presentation.
All right, I'm not hearing, Marsha B. is, is hearing me?
Sorry, sir, it wasn't letting me unmute from my side on my phone. So I apologize. It wasn't a question, it was just asking, well, there's a lot of comments going on in your YouTube chat. I think there's a lot of, of brothers and sisters, you know, they've got a lot of questions. Is it, is the chat in YouTube going to be monitored? That's probably my question to you, sir.
I suspect we're going to have to have another town hall. And we're going to collate these questions, we're going to collate the questions and supply answers in our next town hall meeting.
Okay, so I have one more question then. Could you increase the capacity on the, on the Zoom call, sir?
That is one of the, the things that we're going to, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Is Yin Yang there?
Yes, hi.
I don't know your Yin Yang Twins.
Yes, hi, my name's Nathaniel. I'm calling from London. My reasons for calling, I think I've got a few suggestions. I don't know whether there's a possibility of any of them working. My background, I should say, first of all, is law and renewable energy. I was very concerned from the very beginning and sent an email out to Senator Camilla Johnson Smith about some concerns. So one of the, it's just an idea that I have to present to the commission. I think one of the ways moving forward to get started is to try and use some of the resources that we already have, which is possibly getting the people within the communities in Black River, St. Elizabeth and everywhere else to try to begin a process of removing some of the body into a particular area. Because if we sit and we wait for the military or whoever the police services or any humanitarian aid to get in, we're just waiting, we're just waiting and prolonging the process. So I think one of the things we need to do is to try and get that started as soon as possible. I know in some communities, it's already started. I know people in hotels have been helping to clear away the debris and the mud and so forth. So that's one option. I think a second option is to do something similar like what Ghana did in Africa where they made, the government made an announcement where they started to call their people back home. What you need is people from other countries who are prepared to come back home, to return home to Jamaica with their qualifications and expertise to help the country. Now, that is something that I am thinking of doing and have already approached the government. But, you know, it's something that I feel that needs to have some form of executive collaboration and considerations about how can this be executed? If not, also getting a group of people who are willing to volunteer from in the UK and maybe other parts of the world, who will assist the High Commission in those countries to, there were some good ideas that came forward today to try and get those things mobilized. Because I do believe there's a lot of people that want to help, but nobody don't know how to go about doing it or where to start.
So let me say, thank you for that. It's actually on the website, supportjamaica.gov.jm, where it speaks to volunteers. And just to tell you, it is being spearheaded by Ambassador Anderson, who is in the Washington, who is in Washington. Now, I don't know if anybody knows who Ambassador Anthony Anderson is, but he is a former Brigadier General in the Jamaica Defense Force, former Commissioner of Police, well versed in volunteering who, what expertise is needed, how to deploy them, when to deploy them. He is spearheading that from the Washington mission. And it's, all the information goes to him through that website and other emails that we, the different High Commissioners across the globe, send to him in respect of volunteers. So that is actually in place.
Okay, that's good. So in relation to happening, because a lot of people may, are more than likely going to be displaced. Has the High Commissioner at all ever thought about approaching the UK government and asking them? Because people are going to be needing asylum possibly, you know? I mean, when things happened in the war between Ukraine, they were, one of the first things that came up was that they made an announcement to the British people to, to open up a property, a room in their house to house the UK civilians.
So not only have we thought about it, we have executed. Minister has spoken to the Foreign Secretary here in the United Kingdom. We're in touch with the Foreign, Commonwealth and Development Office. Matter of fact, I've even visited the Crisis Centre, see the real time assistance that they have been giving us in terms of manpower and, and, and items in accordance with the needs list. So that is actually in place.
Oh, that's good. Thank you very much.
Can I move to Anne?
Good afternoon, Your Excellency. I just want to say,
Good afternoon.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can I? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, one of the questions, I know you've answered the questions around barrels, but even though the barrels would arrive, how would they be distributed? How would they be taken to the end, end route? Because if there's no accessibility through the roads, how will people actually receive the aid that's been sent through barrels, via barrels?
All right. So if you're sending privately goods in a barrel outside of what is set up by the government that we have explained for this evening, then it really is up to the arrangements you will make to get that barrel to the family or the community. But if you're going through the supportjamaica.gov.jm, as I've explained, ODPM actually has people on the ground in these communities in tandem with the police and the military to actually distribute their goods in accordance with the needs list to those who need it. So that, they have actually started that process.
Okay, thank you. My other thing is, I thought it would be
All right, so.
There's a little bit of a delay, sorry. Thank you for that. I knew, I don't know if you can still hear me, but the other thing is, I thought it would be good if we had a central point where we could see things that are actually already happening. So it's not just the doom and gloom pictures that's going around, but also there's some positive, this, this is happening here. This is moving on, this has changed. Something that's actually reflecting what I believe must be the hard work that's actually taking place on the ground. But at the moment, only the pictures of the devastation is quickly, you know, viewable.
There is a, there is a pull down or a link on the website, supportjamaica.gov.jm, that speaks to the ongoing efforts outside of what happens on Instagram and so on. Where I think ODPM has an Instagram page where they update as to what they are doing. But I will certainly see to it, I'm going to, maybe a better effort can be done. And I'll certainly see to it that there is better dissemination of the effort that are actually taking place right now. Karen? Karen Ornic?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Your Excellency, for your time this evening. I just had a question that I had put in the chat. Just to say, due to the town hall meeting this evening and the lots of queries that have come in, would it be at all possible for, or queries both on the Zoom and YouTube? I think a lot of similar questions coming in. Would that be possible to collate or queries and provide like a question and answer document for distribution? So that, you know, perhaps if there's another town hall meeting, we're not going over the same queries for, for the, for the other session. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Who is it? Who's the next one? Heritage Bob?
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, His Excellency. Been listening to the, a lot of the questions and response. And, but the short of it basically really, right? Given the Jamaican, we are global people all over the diaspora. And everybody want to contribute in the best way that they can. I was just wondering if, His Excellency, Jamaica Commissioner, if we could actually sort of have, use your leverage in terms of certain country and certain cities where we can actually have a big concert, you know, Help Jamaica Concert. It's something that's not going to be small, but something big, you know? Because we've contributed a lot, you know, in, in, to other places, other people, other charities and everything. Now it's about time, we must do something for our home. So I just wonder if there's any, whether from the, the culture, Minister of Culture, where they can reach out to find out basically, right? If we can have a higher leverage rather than something small in some little towns or city. I think we want to, we want to aspire because this, this ongoing rebuilding and construction of Jamaica is going to be not just immediate now, but short term and long term. And we want to have a Jamaica that we can all be proud of.
Let me say, Heritage Bob, that we quite frankly didn't have a plan to do fundraising ourselves. We didn't, we didn't have that plan. There, as has been said in this town hall meeting, we are aware, our number of different very good charitable organizations that are doing fundraising and for particular reasons, we're not able at this time to officially endorse what they're doing. But we know there are a number of legitimate fundraising events taking place, which we welcome. So I suspect as things go on and really effort is continuing, we may have to revisit that.
Thank you for considering that.
There is a question in the chat on tax relief for those who donate, the UK government is offering tax relief. I can't, for gifting, I can't answer that. We can't hear answer whether or not, if giving to the official website will, will, will be a tax relief thing for your UK government. All right. Are there any other questions?
There's one, one moment, there's one person. Someone on the phone, iPhone, I think it's ready.
Kelly? Okay, iPhone, could you raise your hand? Who was, who says they wish to be unmuted? Okay, there's a Beverly Russell Burke has raised hand. Beverly, okay. Okay, and Emma Thompson as well. So Beverly, you want to do?
Yeah. Good evening, High Commissioner and everybody online. I'm quite concerned with some of the, I believe it is fake news because surely if there is a number of people, over 100 people that have been deceased and just been notified, is going up on social media, that news is spreading like wildfire. How does the Jamaican government intend to manage some of the fake news that is going out? I mean, to my understanding, the, the toll was going up to over 20 people were deceased. Now we're hearing on social media, it's over 100. Is there something, is, do you have any information that you could come for us with that that is not the case? And that things on the ground are being dealt with, where people are being supported? And if there are people who have passed away during Melissa, that their bodies have been taken and to the morgue and being dealt with appropriately? Thank you very much and thank you for your time. I don't know if you can answer that question, but
Information. Yes, thank you. The, the official count are twenty-nine lives lost. That, that is the official count so far. Not saying it won't rise, because we're still going into the highways and byways. Um, as to what we are doing, um, to counter the misinformation that is online, it is being done routinely in the press conferences that emanates from Jamaica House. Um, well, I think we do so on the supportjamaica.gov.jm website. And there are also, there are the, the Jamaica Cyber Incident Response Team. Jamaica Cyber Incident Response Team has been issuing, um, fraudulent alerts um, over the internet. Um, identifying fraudulent domains. So this is something we have been doing, um, fairly continuously. I, I could mention a few fraudulent domains right now. JamaicaHurricaneHelp.net, fraud. JamaicaHurricaneHelp.org, fraud. Jamaica-Hurricane-Help.com. MelissaReliefJamaica.net. MelissaReliefJamaica.com. MelissaReliefJamaica.org. Kind of close. SupportJamaicaGov.JM.net. Those are fraudulent websites.
Yeah.
I repeat again, the genuine one is Su- SupportJamaica.gov.jm.
Thank you.
So.
Uh, sorry to interrupt.
What we can do and what we keep doing is to keep getting. Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you. I understand about the fraudulent websites, um. I was watching, um, Nationwide when they sent out the Jamaic, SupportJamaica.gov um, website. And I understand that there are websites out there. What my concern is, is the fake news, the incorrect news that's going out to our people. And you know, sometimes our people, as soon as they get something and it's online, they believe it wholeheartedly. How do we stop? How, how do we, how can we manage that? And that's what I'd like us to be able to manage, the erroneous, fake, the lies that are going out there. We, you know, some, some of it actually is coming from some of the journalists as well that are out there, that allegedly are supposed to be supporting Jamaica. So how can we prevent that from coming out and going globally, um, ac- across, across the world? That's what I'd like to hear. How can, has Jamaica got?
Yes.
Other than the website, other than the website, is there something that can stop people from saying the lies? You have confirmed that to date there are twenty-nine deaths that we know of, and we're sorry for that loss. But when people then said the Jamaican government is lying, there is over a hundred people, there's bodies spread everywhere, it brings a fear in those who are up here abroad, um, about their loved ones, especially if they haven't heard, due to the lack of electricity and communication problems. It brings that fear and panic in us, and I think that's why many people have decided, well, I'm sending my own barrel, I'm sending my own crate or whatever I can do. Um, and sadly to hear that our, what we do personally will take much longer to get to our people because of the aid given by the charities first, who are primary um, concerns.
So, obviously. Obviously, there's nothing we can do or anybody can do to stop people telling lies. Nothing we can do about that. I like, just about any other um, issue, you're dealing with, um, social media and so on. It really is for reasonable people to go to this source that they should reasonably trust. And what I'm saying is, yes, the website, SupportJamaica.gov.jm, which we here, the Jamaican High Commission, is telling you is the official site. In addition to that, routinely, the Jamaican government does, um, a press conference, there are routine press conferences that are happening in Jamaica, which you can access on YouTube, and if you're not able to get your, um, J I S P B J, um, T V G C V M news feed, um, you can, you can go on YouTube and see the actual press conferences that are coming from the government of Jamaica as a credible source. So, um, yeah, it really is a question of persons being, um, being responsible to seek after the, the true and genuine sources, as with anything else on social media. You know, this is something that the government is doing. I mean, I do, I see it, the, 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 um, the press conferences, uh, several press conferences have taken place so far, where they're trying to correct and push against the misinformation that is there. And I've just read to you official agencies that are putting out information as well.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time, sir. And please do repeat, not it, but let's have another. Um, we need another meeting with calculation of some of the answers, questions that are coming up on the YouTube chat. Some of them have not been met the Zoom, so that would be really good, but thank you again for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much. iPhone ninety?
Hi, um, it's Claudia Mackenzie again, um, and I just wanted to very quickly ask you or to ask you to consider the following. Um, to the last person's point, that there's a lot of misinformation um, on, um, and it's, it's, it's perfectly normal to have this kind of rumor mill when, um, access to real-time information isn't possible. Um, a lot of us in the UK, you must be aware, are feeling quite aggrieved um, about the political climate that we're facing in the UK regarding us as the children of Windrush generation, et cetera, um, and the anti-immigrant, um, uh, perspectives that are out there. So, the government, the UK government's donation of seven million pounds, I'll be very honest with you, I felt was extremely inadequate and an insult when, um, as the child of people who've come from, uh, from Windrush to build this country up, um, I felt it was an insult. It's not something that I am celebrating. And there are many, many people across the UK who feel very similarly, and you will, um, be aware of that with, you know, various YouTubers, various people who are on Instagram and so on and so forth, venting their spleen about what we see as being the inadequate response um, by the UK government to the plight of Jamaica at the moment. So, this is not, this is not a question. This is just my res- request to you respectfully, sir, to please push our government to send more resources. It may not be money, but it may be the British Army to be mobilized, the Royal uh, Company of Engineers, et cetera, who can, um, shore up Jamaica's um, uh, uh, storm defenses, et cetera, over the next two to five years. Whatever Jamaica needs, the UK can send resources to be able to help Jamaica in its time of crisis. When my parents personally, my grandparent personally came to this country to shore up the NHS, et cetera, I'm asking you to put forward to the highest, at the highest level, the Foreign Office, the Foreign Office and, and, uh, Foreign and Commonwealth Development Office, seven million pounds is completely inadequate. And there are resources that the UK has in terms of the British Army and so on and so forth, private enterprise, um, companies, engineering companies such as Mott McDonald, who have a long history in Jamaica of being able to build bridges, rebuild bridges, et cetera. I'm asking you on our behalf to make your voice heard. Seven million pounds is inadequate. Thank you.
And, uh, just to, to remind us all that the the, the seven million is not the, the sum total of what, um, the UK government has done so far. They have in fact established a crisis center in which they are coordinating the very type of relief that you spoke to a while ago. Soldiers, yes, I believe a ship is also made, had been made available to us and so on. So, um, just to, just to say that. And also, yes, I should mention too, the King and Queen have also made a donation. Alright, are there any other questions? There, we have a lot of participants identified as iPhone, who are unable to identify in order to unmute their phones. Yes? So could you raise hands, please? Beverly Russell Burke? So we have our question already?
Ah, I wanted to say.
You wanted to add something, Beverly?
Yes, I wanted you to unmute, um, Miss Emma Thompson, who's been trying to get your attention, but she's doing it in the chat. So really, I'm, I'm cool, I don't know her personally, but Emma Thompson, if, yeah, she's been trying to answer questions for a while.
Okay. Okay. Emma Thompson? Emma Thompson?
We're not seeing her.
Could Emma, please raise your hand? Could you just raise your hand, um, please? We're not seeing her on the list? We're not seeing, Emma, we're not seeing you on, um, on our participant list. Why is that? I did see before, I did see Emma Thompson before. Alright, um, Emma? Um, I don't know if you have the opportunity now to just place your question in the chat so we can address it. Alright. Alright, so let me, let me end by saying, let me end by saying that the response to, um, to, to, to Jamaica is in fact global. Um, the Commonwealth, a number of different Commonwealth nations have reached out to the, to Jamaica to offer the assistance and their help, turnout, and, um, so we expect that there will be, of course, additional relief to Jamaica from the Commonwealth, from Carcom in particular, number of different Carcom countries. Matter of fact, all of them have reached out to us to offer their assistance to us in this, in this particular time. So, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your participation. Please forgive us for the technical issues at the start of the meeting. And, um, we hope that in our next town hall meeting, things will be a lot smoother. This is better, we will, I'm sorry? Oh, oh, good, Emma is back?
I'm so sorry.
Yes, Emma, can you speak?
I can, can you hear me?
Emma, is this Emma?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, is this Emma?
It is Emma Thompson. Can you hear me?
Yes, could you go ahead with your question, Emma?
Okay, so I just want to say.
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright, thank you for getting me to last minute. So I'm actually the granddaughter of, um, Roy Hackett and Ina Hackett, they were part of the Bristol Bus Boys. Um, so they fought a lot for black people to drive the buses and not only the buses, but the transportation. So they were the first people to fight part of the Bristol Bus Boys, so I'm very passionate about Jamaica from child, from, from, from today. Jamaica is my heart. I've always been back and forth. Not only that, I support a rugby team in Jamaica called the Monet Titans, who I feel was never recognized, but my point is what's happening right now, I just feel that, that, so I think someone mentioned it before, a lady before, speaking about everyone's doing so much different things, that there's a confusion, so I believe some things that I've been doing. There's a company in Jamaica called Samper's. I don't know if you, if you're aware of them, they're called Samper's Food Company. I use them a lot and I've used them through Covid. It's an online food service. I'm actually gonna do it after I speak to you. I've been doing personal packages because I believe the people that I want, that I'm dealing with want food straight away. So what I do was I go online to the Samper's website and I pick off the, the line what, what's needed. I then will make the purchase, it then will give me a reference. That reference is given to people in need that are, who will contact me as people are contacting me as well to give food to their families. So I just thought it'd be a good idea to share to anybody on this line, if you're trying to get food quicker to your families, you can look on the Samper's, um, website, as well as, I went for the NHS, I've been working with them for years. Now, when I do events for the NHS, I can go to Tesco, Sainsbury's and get charitable things. Is there any way, when I go back to work, I want to have a big meeting with my directors to see what the NHS can do in helping of, even if it's bedding, beds, whichever it is, but the problem's gonna be, they're gonna ask me, Emma, we need more information. Emma, we need to know that what we're sending or what we're doing is correct. How would I then give them information? I can't be just gonna word of mouth. I need to give them something to, um, show that what I'm doing is not fake and is not illegal. Secondly, there, I, I think someone spoke about people on the ground in Jamaica. I know a couple more people in Jamaica who were trying to run a big event this weekend. Um, one was a chef, um, his name is called Chef Shay, and he's had a couple people he was doing things with. Now, if there was only way people from here could have donated to him, but they were unable to do so, so he went to Montego Bay and all other places, but the problem was the funding. Now, I know you're saying that people should support to the, it's, um, the Jamaica Support Gov, and I think, and that's, that's correct. I understand that, but sometimes there's people on the ground who would like help and support. So is there a way that the people in Jamaica who are, wants to help, that are properly legalized companies, can their informations be shared on the website? So, people may want to donate to them and help them out as well. How, how can we go about doing that?
Alright, so, so Emma? Let me, you see? Um. You, you called a company name?
Yeah.
And, um, in the interest of full disclosure, I'm affiliated to that company.
Okay, mm-hmm.
Alright?
I couldn't hear the signal went.
I'm saying you've raised a company.
Yes.
Jamaica, who you are very pleased with your service.
Very, very.
Um, goods and stuff and all of that. It just so happens I'm affiliated with that company.
Okay.
Can you imagine, can you imagine the conflicts of interest that would arise if I was to promote that company to peace, to the UK diaspora? This is a perfect example.
Okay.
Let me finish, why we as a Jamaican High Commissioner will not get into creating a list of. of distribution companies in Jamaica to say, we recommend, we say you go and, and so on. No. We wouldn't do that. That doesn't mean you can't do it. That doesn't mean you can't go and say to people in, you know, in your community, hey, you know, Samper's is a good company, you know? You can send goods to your, to your loved ones through Samper's website, et cetera, et cetera. You can do it. But you must appreciate the position we are here at the Jamaican High Commission. All right, um, the quest, what you raised about the NHS, in other words, forced to empower you to go to the NHS to donate to us?
Yes.
NHS, no, no. Need that. We're in cut, in touch with the Foreign Commonwealth and Development Office that is spearheading all the relief from the UK government to Jamaica. And I'm certain, matter of fact, I think they did mention it to me, that the NHS is cued in on that as part of the relief effort that the UK government is giving to Jamaica. So they didn't worry about the NHS. All right?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Um, this has been spirited, informative, and I hope useful to everybody who took the trouble to come out to this town hall meeting. Our apologies again for the technical glitches that took place during the course of the meeting. And we, we will see to it that on the next occasion, we iron out those issues. So thank you very much for your deep interest in seeing to it that Jamaica recovers as soon as possible from the worst hurricane that it has experienced in its history. Thank you very much and good day to you all. Thank you.